City folks, you guys ready?
Sure.
Everyone's good? Perfect. Baltimore City Council Legislative Investigations Committee, we're here for legislative oversight. LO 23-0031, Baltimore City's Analysis on the Sale or Control of Conduit System. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, to my immediate left, Council President Nick Mosby, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, and Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee.
Thank you.
Will also be joined in a minute by Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee. Here tonight for the purpose of discussing the deal with Baltimore Gas and Electric regarding the city's conduit system and to obtain information from the executive administration about the city's plan for the maintenance, capital improvements, or any other terms of the duties under the franchise agreements related to the underground conduit system. Before we get started, are there any members of the public that are here this evening that wish to testify? Okay. We will move to the administration. Law Department has been the lead on this. Is there anything that you want to provide or add, or do you want to get right into questions?
Just the questions, Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Oh, did you ask me that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
And I missed what you said, so we're even. I was asking, did you guys have anything that you want? Does the administration have anything that it wishes to share this evening? At the beginning of a hearing when we give agencies the opportunity?
No, Mr. Chair, and good evening.
Thank you. Have we? Have we? The proposed agreement, it includes a $14 million upfront payment from BGE to the city, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it does.
And that would come in the form of a check, right?
Yes, sir.
We've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway, 4th issue.
Good evening.
Has BGE provided that check to the city?
We did receive a $14 million check on the 7th, and I think today is the 7th. Yes, I believe so. I still have to double-check with Finance.
Yes, we received that check this morning that was provided to the Finance Director.
Mr. Senneme, what did we do with the check?
I hope we deposited it.
So, your best guess is we deposited the check already?
Yeah, when they receive checks, they deposit it right away if they know where the money should go, and in this case, we know what it's for.
Okay. So what happens if it's determined that there's not actually an agreement in place? We would have $14 million of someone else's money, right?
We're confident that it is.
Okay. And I assume that's BGE's position?
Yes, sir.
Did we receive any information on the $50 million estimate that started getting circulated at the second of three meetings of this committee?
Yes, sir. As BGE testified, it's actually closer to $55 million that the residents had less of an impact. They would have had a $55 million increase. So, yes, that was testified by BGE last time, and then also at the last BOE on the 1st of March, sir.
So, do we have any information on how they came up with that methodology? Because I know the folks from the administration that were testifying here at the second hearing seemed very confident that that number was a matter of fact.
Yes, sir. And that would be something that we would receive from BGE. However, they do have on their website sort of the general information, but I think that would be determined from BGE. We actually don't have that within the city, but BGE does have that information.
Okay. I want to jump to the questions that we submitted in writing and some of your responses. Before we do that, colleagues, any questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see BGE is here. I have a question. I actually have a question also for DOT. Going back to the line of questioning that I've had for the last two hearings, I also submitted to you all a list of my biggest concern is the, well, I have a lot of concerns. The one I've been emphasizing in these hearings is the communications and outreach, right? BGE is about to dig up our city, right? We still do not have guarantee from an email that I sent to Danielle, which should have been, which I added the director and the solicitor, which I haven't gotten back. They are a utility. They consistently dig up the road and don't tell us that they're digging. We, I have said before, we need notice, just like what DPW does, right? If there's planned work in the area, everybody gets a flyer, there's notice, and everybody knows what's going on, right? If there's emergency work, the councilperson gets a notice saying there's emergency work, right? We get none of that from BGE, and we should have it. And I asked specifically for that. So I need to know, first of all, why it wasn't put in agreement that we need to have this customer service and notice? And secondly, if we can get that guarantee, that we need to have better communication with residents about what's happening when BGE is, you know, digging up the street? Because we don't have that right now.
Councilwoman, I believe maybe we possibly stated that maybe BGE was here, but they are in fact not here. Maybe something I said confused the council.
Oh, you are?
I retract that statement. But, okay, I wasn't aware that they were here, so I'm sorry.
So, but I need an answer to my question.
I don't have that answer. I think that would be directed to BGE, and they were here the last time, and I thought they tried to address that, but maybe they did not.
They said that they would improve their communications. I sent them a very detailed email about what
They're here.
I understand, but he just said he wasn't going to answer.
Irving Mead Daniel?
Hi, how are you?
Senior Manager, External Affairs. We're not here to testify. I'm not in receipt of the email, but we will definitely respond to you.
Okay, I'll send it over to you. I sent it to Danielle to send it over, because I didn't have everybody else's.
And I will restate what was said before, as far as all the things that we've done since last year, to improve our outreach communications. It is a journey. We're not where we want to be yet, but I can say we're much better now than we were before. And again, a brand-new community engagement team has been created to focus on that, as well as additional vendors to help with outreach and support, not just for this work, but for our work across the city and across the service territory.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I know that we've done some work with you all on it. I hope that we can get a detailed understanding of what that communication is going to look like moving forward. So I'll make sure you get the email. And my second question is, and I'm trying to find in my crazy inbox, I had, there was a bunch of work being done in Remington that was being done not within ADA compliance, and I can't figure out where my email is, but the quote was, "We are just now telling our contractors to comply with the ADA." The ADA has been in place for 30 years. And so I'm just curious, are we, BGE is committing to making sure that the ADA is going to be followed as they're doing, you know, which basically means when they're on the sidewalk, you have to provide a passageway? When there's, you know, something that you're interrupting a ramp, that there's a different way to do it? That there's, we're not putting poles in the middle of the sidewalks, those kinds of things? So you'll be working through that and making sure that that happens?
I know, when we met together around this time last year, that was one of the issues that came up. And we'll work to comply with all their requirements as part of the DOT permits, which includes the federal requirements of the ADA compliance.
Okay, so, and DOT will be monitoring that as you move forward?
Yes, we are inspecting and making sure that they are meeting all requirements, and ADA is included in all the projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll forward this other email to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Mr. President?
To the administration, I think it was recently reported, I think today, and this has been kind of a concern on the council from the beginning, and I think we've consistently touted BGE's record, but the reason that many of us have had concern in trying to vet through the agreement is folks have said it's vague, lacking of substance and details. And one of the main concerns has been clearly about MBE, WBE, as well as equity as it relates to the full control that BGE has under the agreement. I know that was recently reported, that that language was in there or asked to be in there, and BGE, I guess, was strong, I don't want to overstate, I guess, their perspective, so, but was strong in trying to take it out of the agreement. Could you talk to us about what took place to ensure that, one, we have minority women-owned business goals in the deals like we do with the City of Baltimore, and we require our contractors to have, as well as local hiring associated with this particular deal?
Sure. So, the first thing is that once we put that into all of our default contracts, and then we saw the MOU that BGE had with the PSC, where they had their own goals and they've been exceeding them, we heard testimony that this year, I'm sorry, for 2022 was 42%, the year before that, 44%. So, the fact that they had exceeded the goals that were already in their MOU, we felt that that was adequately, would service the goals that we would have. So, that, but we've said that many, many, many times. This is nothing new that was reported today.
That you originally tried to get them to adhere to the MWBE standards and local hiring, and that they specifically asked to take that out of the agreement?
That they specifically had a MOU already that they had
Oh, yeah, that they've been touting the 42%?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the problem is, what we've talked about on the council is, you know, talking about this specific work, you know, meaning this is money that was ultimately coming to the city. We ultimately stood up a conduit division that has done an exceptional job, made up of many Baltimoreans. And that giving that work out, dissipating that work to a corporation of this size and this magnitude, does not mean that we're going to have Baltimoreans back on this type of work. You know, when you look at a larger goal like that, it's all different lines of procurement, all different lines of their business. I think the key with this is, obviously, this is a skill set that's going to be needed moving forward in perpetuity, is what we kind of see as their requirement for this particular deal. So that was of that concern. So, I think many members of this council have expressed that we were disappointed that the city, this administration, did not have MWBE requirements in this deal. I think many folks in this council was upset that the administration did not have local hiring requirements in this deal. And to know that originally that was on the table, and that BGE intentionally asked to take it away, because throughout their entire corporation, they are adhering to a certain percentage, is still very concerning.
Understood and noted, sir.
Thank you. We sent over a request, I believe on March 2nd?
Yes, sir, for the additional six questions? Or was that the original?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Six questions.
Yes, sir.
Did we receive a response yet?
We can respond here. Do you want to go one by one, sir?
Sure.
Sure. DOT, take the first, do you have the first one? Oh, okay. The first one is, what is the schedule of meetings the administration will have with conduit users other than BGE? And please provide? And please provide any documentation to that effect.
So, regarding that question, presently, we don't have routine meetings with all the different conduit users. There's different meetings here and there with different utility companies. If there is the desire to have these meetings with the conduit users, we would be glad to have, like, twice-a-year meetings. It would probably be, however, it would be like all the conduit users? Not, I wouldn't see the benefit in just being one group and then excluding BGE. Excuse me. That was to the schedule of the meetings, and was there a second part to that question?
If there was documentation, but it doesn't sound like
There's no documentation, because those meetings don't occur. So, that, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. I think the reason we asked the question is because we heard from the conduit users at the first meeting of this committee that I'm trying to think how to characterize this appropriately, that they weren't getting the same level of attention that BGE was with respect to meetings and discussions around this proposed agreement. All right, number two. List of inspectors and any supervisors employed by DOT or contractors?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair. To DOT, in regards to the same vein of that question, the dig-ones policy, how does that fit into, I guess, the way that BGE is going to operate, the way that the city is going to coordinate with them? Kind of back to Councilwoman Odette Ramos's concerns, is there a way that we're going to manage that?
So presently, with any projects that are coming through the queue, whether it's another utility, or if it's a DOT project, we go through and check our systems. We check Invista and reach out to find out if there's any projects planned, or if there's a potential need for there to be any underground work in prep for a resourcing project, for example. So I would expect the same type of dialogue and coordination to occur. Those would be some of the things that even though we would have, say, a potential CIP established in coordination with BGE, we would still have those conversations. And so if we recognize, or when we recognize that there's a project at a certain location, then we have those type of dialogues to try to align the projects and meet the one-dig goal.
Understood. So, but we have the luxury today of knowing, you know, like you said, I'll see CIP goals and connecting with planning, DOT, whether it's wrecking parks, whatever, DOT, DPW. How will that work in the future with BGE? Will they provide us in advance, like, a three-year lookout, so we can kind of merge and align that with our CIP goals, or how does that work?
Give me one moment.
And this really goes to, I guess, the motivation of Councilwoman Odette Ramos's questions.
So I was trying to see if I could find the exact language in the agreement, but however, under the agreement, if there were certain DOT priorities, we would send those over to BGE for their review and our subsequent coordination. Even like today, if there is a project that pops up and maybe wasn't originally on DOT CIP, then we'll have further discussions and see if there's any way of shifting priorities to try to meet that one-dig policy. So I envision the same scenario in working with BGE. And overall, it just makes sense for everyone involved.
So how far in advance would we know where BGE is going to? For instance, the Greenmount project, where I think it was DOT, DPW, even maybe another agency that was properly planned in advance to ensure that we had that one-dig goal. Ultimately, that project was enormous, you know, the community was still, you know, concerned about it because it was so large, but it gave us the ability to kind of work in together. Well, we know in advance, say for instance, in 2024, 25, what BGE is planning on doing, so Department of Planning, DOT, DPW, as it relates to the work that they would like to do, we can start putting that and prioritizing that from a capital improvement plan perspective.
There would definitely, excuse me, there will be some advance zones. It all depends on the type of project. So of course, there's that lead time. So there's going to be the planning, identifying that there needs to be a project in a given area, and then the design phase to lead up to the actual, say, physical construction. So, all of that is going to be discussed and brought to DOT's attention during those monthly meetings.
But the problem, what I'm asking is like, how far in advance? That's what I'm trying to get to. So like, when we're coming up with our capital improvement plan, and, you know, different council members are jacking in for, you know, can we do this street? Can we plant trees here? DPW is concerned about pipes that are in that particular area. Like, how far in advance will we know, so when we do those capital improvement plans, we can factor and prioritize the work that BGE is already digging up the streets to kind of do?
So it, again, it varies based on the type of work. I would easily see it being a year out, but again, it could be much further out than that. It's going to be, excuse me, it's going to be dependent on the type of work that is, excuse me.
I guess what I'm asking administration is that that we're very intentional, and that we're not reacting, that we're being, we're planning out in a better way. I mean, obviously, that's where the city was headed, and that's where the city wanted to continue to improve with like that one-dig policy. It would seem to me to make sense that that's kind of embedded in an agreement like this to ensure that, because that ultimately costs the city more money. If we were in control, and we were going digging up a street for a conduit, and DPW could do it, and we are able to plan it out a couple of years in advance, that's where we get the cost savings. Right now, with us not in the driver's seat, but literally relying on BGE to tell us that information, there could be opportunities for there to be huge misses. So what I would, had hoped to see like in an agreement like this, that we intentionally try to go down this path of having the one-dig policy, because it's critically important, not only as it relates to cost savings, but also, you know, the customer experience for our residents that have to live through these years of construction.
No, I understand, I understand the concerns, and I agree with you on that point. And part of what we do in trying to coordinate work is not only just looking at and saying, hey, what do we want to do from a CIP standpoint for conduits, but we're actually looking to see what other projects are going on. So really, so DPW projects, or other DOT projects, or other entities that are out there doing more major work, those projects in reality are probably known much further in advance than some of the conduit type of work. And so that's where we're able to identify those DPW projects, the DOT, streetscapes, or whatever it is, and say, hey, we're starting the early design phase here, or we have this one that's actively in design. We've looked, and we have some conduit needs, we haven't done any reconstruction in this area, and then that's where we can have those conversations. So it's not necessarily that BGE's plan would dictate it, but we'll be able to look ahead and see what other projects the agency has going forward, and then have those in those conversations. But as far as giving you an exact timeline, I can't give you an exact number.
Yeah, again, we keep missing. I wasn't looking for an exact number, I was just looking for the process and the policy from a one-dig perspective. I think the fact that we've given a private institution the sole discretion to determine where they are, it seems like we would also probably provide some boundaries of understanding and partnership where we, in advance, they could provide us where they expected to kind of do their work. Because that way, we could go to wrecks and parks, we could go to Department of Transportation, we could go to Department of Public Works, we can go to other city agencies, and we can land a streetscaping and say, hey, you know, on this particular street, in 2024, 2025, this is what BGE is planning, it plans on doing? And that would provide them the ability to start developing their capital improvement plan process over there to prioritize their work for that particular area. Sometimes just 12 months out is not enough lead time, even for things like streetscaping on major corridors. So that's where the concern is, and that's where we were headed. And I think one of the projects that kind of highlights that is the Greenmount Avenue project.
If I may just follow up on that real quick. We have asked BGE for the planned projects for this year, and I know it's coming, I know it's coming, so that the council members can be prepared, but I think, Mr. President, you're in thinking longer term. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I do hope that we can continue to get those annually to be able to prepare the council members, but if we can, you know, maybe figure out a way to do a, you know, we do a six-year CIP.
Correct, for a reason.
So, hopefully, we can have a process where we're not just getting them annually, but also you're saying to us, well, heads up, in two more years, we may have this. Because I think that's going to be important. But I think for our purposes, at least for notice, that year is important. We're in March now, so hopefully we'll get it in March. Thanks.
And one thing I'd just like to explain, just even for our DOT CIP that we've been working on, it is a working document, so it's adjusted in accordance with certain conditional assessments and other capital project prioritizations of the other utility agencies. And so there is a continuous process of coordination on the work that we have planned, but then things, plans might change, and we redirect and do work elsewhere. And so that same coordination is what I see occurring under this agreement.
Thank you. Let's jump back to the questions. Number two, please provide the list of inspectors and any supervisors employed by DOT or contractors for DOT who will be monitoring the conduit system for the city?
So we do, we do have that list. I guess it'd probably be best that we send it to you, but I can say that as far as the supervisors, there are nine supervisors and about somewhere around about 20 or so inspectors that would be engaged on the conduit work. Actually, it's 22, 22 inspectors.
Twenty?
There are 22 inspectors.
22 inspectors, nine supervisors, right?
Say it again.
Nine supervisors and 22 inspectors. And then I'm assuming, obviously, one division chief?
Well, I included the division chief in, so basically, I included the division chief, the construction project supervisors, the field services manager, there's a cable inspection supervisor and a conduit superintendent, and a construction project supervisor. So those are all like essentially the supervisor roles, and then we have both city inspectors and consultant inspectors.
Got it.
Under the new agreement, this, we need the same level of personnel?
Yes, we're maintaining that staff level.
Thank you. Can you provide that to us in writing?
Yes.
And include the names? Thank you. Want to jump to number five. Please provide any documentation of prior purchase offers or documents exchanged in any negotiation the city has engaged in to explore the possibility of selling the conduit system?
There are none.
Baltimore Sun reported in 2015 that BGE offered the city $100 million for the conduit system.
I have never seen any evidence of that whatsoever my entire time here. As far as I'm concerned, I have not seen that. I've actually been looking for that because a lot of people have said that that was reported, but there is no evidence of that. There are none.
All right, hang on, give me one second.
And while the chair is looking, no supporting documentation from FMI on the possibility of what could be when we were working with them in 2022?
No, sir. If you're talking about sales? No, sir.
May I add something to that?
Please, please.
I know at the last meeting, we had Comcast and Crown Castle here, and they were in disagreement with a number of things, and I was one, and I know that you, you know, on a yearly or so basis negotiate and work with them. Has there been Has there been conversations, you know, with them reassuring their work? Because they, you know, have some very strong contracts with our city as well.
Yes, Madam VP, absolutely. We have been in negotiations with them, conversations with them, and we will continue to do that. They each have all individual contracts, so we can't kind of put them in a lump sum, but each individually, yes, we will actually still be engaged in conversations with them, ma'am.
And how does that, does their work affect what BG&E is about to acquire?
Well, none of their rights will be, they won't have anything that will take away that's in their contracts. All their terms are still going to remain the same. But we are reaching out to them and we are in communication with them, have been, and will continue to do so. But each contract is different with each one of those users, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There's an article in the Baltimore Sun dated August 9, 2015, by Luke Broadwater. I'm sure he would appreciate the shout out as he no longer works with the Sun. Documents obtained by the Sun show BG&E's Chief Financial Officer, David M. Vajos, and Vice President Alexander G. Nunez have been discussing the matter with the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Calliope Parthamos, and Transportation Director, William Johnson.
I have not seen any of those documents, sir.
Since at least 2014, city officials have been in discussions with BG&E about possibly raising conduit rates, documents show. In May, BG&E countered with an unsolicited offer to buy the whole system. In a July email, Vajos wrote that the $100 million offered would provide an immediate influx of substantial cash to the city and allow the city to stop spending about $8 million annually to maintain the conduit system. Quote, "BG&E believes that it can manage and maintain the system at a cost equal to or less than the city's current conduit system expenditures," end quote, Vajos wrote. If BG&E were to buy the conduit system, it would mean the company would have the power to charge other users fees to access the ducts. Okay, so we don't have anything for number five?
I've never seen it.
Director, do you know of anything?
No, I do not.
Certainly can appreciate that. I think we're four solicitors ago and three directors and one acting director ago at DOT, if my memory serves me correctly.
Still the same perspective.
Number six, please provide any documentation available demonstrating how this agreement is referenced in BG&E's current rate case with the Maryland Public Services Commission?
The city wouldn't be in possession of this information, but it may be a request to ask BG&E. I will note that BG&E's website provides some information and it's titled, "BG&E's Multi-Year Energy Infrastructure Plan Ensures Safe and Reliable Energy for Customers and Supports Maryland's Vision for a Cleaner Energy Future." And that's a link on their site and they may go into numbers there, but that's a specific request for BG&E, sir.
I think we've already covered number three. Please provide us an explanation on the process for amending the agreement between the city and BG.
Yes, sir.
And then?
Number four, I can direct you where that is within the documents that we did provide, if that would be helpful, Mr. Chair. If you could see folder number five for all the amounts paid by the conduit users. I believe Chief Rully sent that link and it broke out based on the questions of 12 different folders. So it would be in folder five for that one. And then the cost of current projects for maintenance or capital improvements are in folders eight and nine, if you want to refer to those. And all those documents are there, sir.
Got it. Thank you. The council president referred to a report regarding emails in between the administration and BG and that there was a PIA request filed and the city sent those emails in response to that PIA?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can you forward the committee the exact same email that you?
Sure, would love to. Yes, sir.
So that I don't have to recreate a PIA request?
Exactly, exactly. And for the future, you don't have to issue a subpoena. I'll give it to you if you tell me you want it.
That's how we originally... For the record, Madam Solicitor, and I know that you were just kind of making light of the importance of why we're here. But I think it's really important to know that this council, starting back in October, has asked the administration for transparency on this issue. And obviously, we feel like we have not received transparency. Now, from your purview and from the limited interaction that we've had with you on this issue, things have improved and we appreciate that. But I don't take lightly the fact of what we've had to do and the time that we've put in to try to get to the bottom of this, of asking really basic questions and concerns. I also don't take lightly that things like from $7 million to $20 million to $50 million to now $55 million have constantly changed. Nor do I take lightly as it relates to just the speed and nature of when the media finally reported on what the administration was attempting to do. Administration changing rules to do that and then the administration unilaterally voting it out. So that's why we're here. And again, I just think it's important for me to communicate that as it relates to, I guess, the comment that was just made. Back to questioning, I know we talked about the article that was written, I believe, this today regarding the MBE, WBE, as well as local hiring goals that were originally taken out or refused to put into this agreement. It also talked about the fact that the city wanted some level of control of capital improvement planning on where projects would be had. And ultimately, I guess BG&E did not want that to be placed inside of the agreement. Could you walk us through how that took place and where we are today?
Sure, I'll start and I'll let Director Goldberg finish up. But the sole discretion, in order for us to realize the $50 million now, we know that is closer to $55 million in savings. The depreciation was based on the sole discretion. That means that by having the sole discretion there, they were able to claim that depreciation.
And Madam Solicitor, when you say "we," you're talking about all BG&E residents throughout the entire state?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, in terms of who realizes the savings. Yes.
I think when people hear the mayor and you say, "We've saved $50 million," they're thinking that you're representing Baltimore City and Baltimore City residents have saved $50 million.
Yes, but they are included. So they are also, they are definitely benefiting from the savings and they also would be burdened by the increase if it had not been for this, when we talk about this sole discretion language.
Yeah, but I think when you apply the $50 million or any million dollars savings to the city of Baltimore and then you compare that extrapolating out throughout the entire state, that's just a different feel. So that's why I was just making sure we're on the same page. When you were saying, "We've saved," that we're talking about the entire state of Maryland.
Absolutely. And Baltimore City is part of the state and we realized those savings as ratepayers. But the sole discretion language allowed BG&E to pass that depreciation on in terms of savings to ratepayers, Baltimore City included with all their ratepayers. But I'll let Director Goldberg fill in anything that I've missed in terms of the sole discretion language and how it has appeared in regular contracts. Because he's been here longer than me.
I'm just older, so, but I think you did a great job. So I would just say, the only thing to add is that $55, and I think BG&E representatives said in excess of 50. So that's where sort of maybe the numbers confusion, but the excess of $50 million savings, that was based on the $28 million that they were putting into the annual maintenance. So getting the additional $6.5 million per year, that's going to be going into the capital improvements. That would have been even more that would have been have to pass on to the ratepayers. So that $50, excess of $50 million, that's just based on the old number. If we had done nothing, if we hadn't had any additional revenue going into the city's conduit system. And so getting the additional revenue plus that decrease based upon the old number is really the benefit to the Baltimore City citizens. I understand when you're saying that's a pass on to all of Maryland's BG&E users, but the city-specific benefit is not just the lower rates that's passed on, but the additional $6.5 million that's going to go into the city's capital improvements of the conduit system. Now specifically as a reference, the sole discretion, you know, that's not new language in any of the old, any of the city agreements. One of their agreements that's referenced in one of the folders from the 1982 Master Lease Agreement talks about sole discretion and BG's ability to do so. The only way to have that pass on and have the amortization of the conduit system to allow the less, the pass on to be allowed for the rates is to have that sole discretion language in there.
Got you. And that's what we've heard. I know BG&E says it's not the case, but I guess that's what we've heard. Also the reasoning to support some tax incentive. Not sure if it's true. BG&E says it's not true, so we take them on their word. I guess when we take that $55 million and we do apply it to the entire state, with the $10.60 or $0.30 increase that was proposed in the rate increase, what would that have changed? Like, how much more money would have been in that rate increase?
So that's a difficult question for me to answer. I mean, I know BG&E's rep doesn't want to testify tonight.
You don't know, do you?
No, it's complicated.
Could you just go back, you don't have to explain. Could you go back and ask them to provide us the difference if the $55 million that we've saved was inside of this rate case?
Okay. Does that make sense?
Some questions around how the bill would have changed?
Yeah, we keep saying that we save $55 million. Again, I think it's important to say that the state has saved $55 million.
BG&E Service Authority.
Your entire footprint, you know, but in dollars and cents. Right now, the rate case is for it to go up 10-plus cents. Maybe it would have been $11, maybe it would have been $10.50, maybe it would have been $12. I don't know, but I think that that's what we're really telling folks that we saved.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Now, I think the only other thing that when we talk about, because now we're talking about the money and the $6 million definitely is a positive. But if we were to take this money to like the bond market and float it and we amortize it out ourselves, what type of bond would we've been able to receive from an infrastructure perspective? Did the administration do any analysis on that?
Well, sure. You want me to talk? I can talk about this, but I'll let Bob fill in a little bit, which is that the amortization of the city's conduit system, if you look at the CAFR statements, is on there. But the city as a non-taxable entity cannot take that amortization. There's no essential way to pass it along to the rate users.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't ask the question right. If we took the revenue, looking at the revenue, the $28 million, potentially $34.5 million, if we took that in on an annual basis, basically, we'll be able to receive it in perpetuity. We'll assume that BG&E will constantly be there. If we went to New York or Chicago with it and tried to float a bond, what type of size of a bond would we be able to receive to do our own infrastructure work?
Okay, go ahead.
So we've never, at least as long as I've been here, we've never?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not asking if we've done it before, if there's any examples. Obviously, we know we could do it. I was just wondering, from your financial background, would you be able to quickly determine, knowing the current rates, what type of bond we would be able to receive if we decided to take that out-of-the-box approach?
Yeah, we could do that. I can ask our Treasury folks to cross that out based on current rates.
Thank you. But I guess from the administration, that was never a factor?
No, because we've, I mean, we do issue bonds for other enterprise funds, for water wastewater utilities, for parking facilities, for example. But here, we've done it on a pay-go basis since the, you know, the revenue covers both the maintenance costs and the capital costs. We've just done a pay-go approach where revenue comes in, gets allocated directly to capital projects.
Got you. And again, from the administration perspective, when we were looking at this agreement, there was never an idea for us to potentially go down the pathway of doing that, correct?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Thank you.
And I think we, so we already covered number four, so that covers everything on the six. Do you all have any clarification you want to provide on the original request that we sent over with the 12 questions?
No, sir. I just wanted to make sure that you got all of the, that you found everything, because we broke them out. I just didn't know if you had questions on it, but...
Colleagues, are there any questions on the link that we circulated which had the administration's responses to our 12 questions?
No questions. I'll just continue to beat a dead horse with this FMI deal. I just, it baffles me that we don't have anything that's more substantive. The administration, not only in October, but also in December aggressively pushed on the BOE the importance of us getting into that $50,000 agreement with a consultant that was going to be a subject matter expert in providing recommendations and findings associated with what we should do with our conduit system. And for us to not to have any substantive production of any material from that vendor is frankly unacceptable.
Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, we're now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.